Okay, welcome committee. Why don't we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Where's the pulpit over there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, can I get the roll call, please?
Jason Blake.
President.
Adam Gus.
Here.
Amy Blaser.
Here.
Ron Ludwig.
Here.
Nicole Pavoris.
Here.
Dave Seacrest.
Here.
Tom Veklevak.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, board. Before we start the meeting here, I have a couple of comments that I have to make tonight. First of all, it's really been a privilege to serve the community and serve this board for the last two years, and I do call it a privilege. I took it very seriously, and I'm very proud of what our board has done. This has been one of the best boards that I have worked on, and I've really enjoyed working with them and will continue to work with them. But as of tonight, I am stepping down as president of the school board. And the reason for that is I am going to be moving on to fulfill my career aspirations. I'm moving on to a different role, which is going to take a lot of time and effort from my standpoint, and it wouldn't be fair to the community. It would not be fair to this board for me to serve as president. A couple of things is, first of all, Adam has served as president before, and the way this would work is I will be going through some of the words that I have to go through to do that, but effectively, I'm resigning as president, and with the bylaws, Adam, who is currently our vice president, will take over as president of the board. Other than that, I'd like again to thank the community for giving me this opportunity to serve as the board president, and again, I'd like to thank the board. And now I will go through a couple of quick things here. Therefore, I am resigning my appointment as president of the board per board policy 2-1110. The vice president automatically fills a vacancy in the presidency for the remainder of the current two-year term of office. And so now I turn the gavel over to Adam Gus as he assumes the board presidency going forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Adam. You're going to do a great job.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Before we move on, Jason, I'd like to say thanks, and really, for the last two and a half years, almost. I think that it's been, it's not always an easy chair to sit in, and you know, your time there has been a time that's not really been easy for anybody the entire time, you know, and I certainly appreciate all the work you put in and the leadership that you provided this board. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now what we need to do is to hold a special board election, and so the board all understands what's going on, but just in case this is confusing for anybody, Jason is resigning his presidency, but he's staying on the board. And so what happens, like you said, according to our policy, I slide over, but then my position as vice president is now vacant, and that's what we're filling right now before we move on. So as I said, then, before we move on, we need to hold what we'll call a special board election to elect a new vice president. So at this point, we will need a nomination or nominations for the board officer position of vice president to fulfill the remainder of the current two-year term. Are there any nominations for that position?
Well, then, I.
Well, I guess I have a question. Jason, are you interested in serving as vice president?
Yes, I will fulfill any role that the board wishes to ask me to do.
Okay, and then I would nominate you to just move a notch down.
Okay, I would accept that.
So we have one nomination for Jason. Would anybody else like to make a nomination? Hearing none, then, since there is only one nominee, we can do this just with a quick voice vote if the board is okay with that. I don't see any objections, so then I would say all in favor of Jason Blake as vice president. Please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, Jason Blake is now officially elected as the board vice president. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, board.
Before we move on now to the regular agenda item, I do need to remind everybody that per Governor Pritzker's COVID-19 Executive Order Number 85, all individuals are required to wear a face mask when visiting a public school building. If you're paying attention and looking around, you'll see that some boards have already made the decision to move these meetings completely online, hold them virtually. This board, this administration, does not want to do that. We truly do value having these things face-to-face and having you guys here, but our ability to do that and our willingness to do that in some cases is somewhat dependent on our ability to hold these meetings in a manner that adheres to that executive order. And so, I honestly can't see right now, but if you are here without a mask, respectfully, we would request that you put one on. There are some available in the back. The first item then on the regular agenda is approval of minutes. These minutes are from a regular meeting held August 17, 2021. When somebody's ready, we'll take that motion.
Shall I move?
The move by Dave.
I'll second.
Seconded by Amy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blaser?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Veklevak?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up then will be the Crystal Lake South High School presentation by Principal Nabilio.
A little easier to see now with the lights down.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I start with a congratulations to you, Adam, and good luck to you, Jason. Thank you both for serving us and giving us the opportunity to lead in our buildings the way that we do. We feel like we have that support and the ability to lead the way we need to from a building level, and you guys are a basis of that. So from my end and from the principals, just a thank you to each one of you for that support. So just one more time, a thank you.
Thanks, man.
All right, so tonight's presentation, before we jump in, I wanted to just say a couple of other thank yous. We have up here, from what I can see on my screen, two spaces in this building that have been redone in the course of the last year and a half. This space that we're standing in, the theater, is one of those two spaces. The other space is right down the hallway here as a gymnasium. And from the looks of those pictures there of the gymnasium, what we're looking at here in the theater, both of these spaces just came out incredibly well. They are, I think, a source of pride for us as a school building. They're a source of pride for our students when they're onstage or competing in the gymnasium. And so I know that that's a lot of work from the board's end to make that possible. There's a lot of finances that need to be rearranged to make that possible. And so I guess I just want to start by saying thank you to you for that, and I thank you for those opportunities to keep this building looking as nice as it does year after year. So just a thank you for that as well. Tonight's presentation really is a conversation about what we started to call CLS Connect. And we have a couple of people here tonight who are going to step up and speak on behalf of what CLS Connect was. But if we rewind the clock back to February of 2021, we were sitting here in a school building wondering, we have 40, 45% of our students in the building who are remote. We weren't sure what the '21-'22 school year was going to look like. We were questioning whether or not students were going to want to come back to the school building. We were wondering if students were going to be able to come back to the school building. And so we started having some conversations about what can we do to begin to connect with families in a new way and do some outreach to them within the communities and where they live, where they're spending their time. And so we call that CLS Connect. We spent the course of last spring developing what that plan was. We spent a lot of time last summer really implementing it, and we continue to implement what we're calling CLS Connect, which is an effort from our end to make sure that we are supporting students in every way possible and helping them reconnect to the school building. And so tonight, we're here to share a little bit about that. I wanted to mention that you as a board gave us the opportunity to be able to use some of our ESAR funds in a manner that we felt like would be best serving our students. And so some of what you're going to hear tonight is a discussion about how we use those ESAR funds to make sure that we are supporting our students and getting them back on track, both academically and socially emotionally. So what we did, simply put out some communication to our community, saying we really wanted to begin to reconnect with them in new ways. We took a look at our map of all the different students who come to Crystal Lake South, and we started drawing neighborhoods out around our community. And we said, you know, there's eight, nine different communities, and within each one of those neighborhoods and those communities that come to South, each one of them has a local park. And so we contacted each of the park districts. We partnered with them to be able to use their park spaces. We went to the different neighborhoods, and we began to do that outreach. You can see in the pictures, there were students who were coming and playing games of can jam with us. You can see the Giant Jenga. I think I got better at Giant Jenga this summer than I had ever been before. Spent some time doing some ring toss, giving out T-shirts to students, and really just beginning to have that conversation again about what it's like to interact with your peers, what it's like to interact with adults at school, and just begin to dream about what it is to come back to school. So this was a really neat way for us to be able to get out there. We did this every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the course of the summer, started in early June and ended in late July. So it gave us about eight trips, nine trips out to different parks. When we did that, we also partnered with food trucks. We asked a food truck to come out, be there with us. We had Churros and Chocolate. We have Vince and Vicky Ortiz here in the audience tonight, and we brought them in because Churros and Chocolate, when we talk about community partnerships, when we talk about the opportunity to be able to work with our businesses, to be able to provide a service back to our community, their company of Churros and Chocolate did exactly that. They met us out there every Tuesday and Thursday. They partnered with us in every way possible, and they really made it a great space for our students to really begin to reconnect with us, begin to connect with school buildings, and begin to connect with one another in the community. And so I just want to give a huge thank you to both Vince and Vicky and Churros and Chocolate for coming out here this evening and for what they did for us throughout the course of the summer. So round of applause to you guys. We have about 50 Churros or so in the back, so if you haven't had dessert yet or you need some dessert, I know before you walk out here this evening to grab some. But I want to, at this point, turn this over. Lori's going to talk a little bit about some of the other portions of this CLS Connect, and she's going to share a little bit about that, what we did service-wise throughout the summer.
So the first part of CLS Connect really was designed for all students, the entire CLS community, and that's why we went to those parks. But the second part of CLS Connect was really focused at what we called our two freshman classes. Those of you who know anything about the class of 2024, and I have some of them here with me, know that they didn't really get to have a normal freshman year. Many of them were remote. The typical freshman year experiences that they could have had, they just didn't get to have. And then we also had the class of 2025, who were transitioning in from eighth grade. They didn't get to have a traditional curriculum night or an eighth grade night, and so we knew we really needed to work to make both of those classes feel comfortable here at South. So the second part of CLS Connect were events. to do that and our willingness to do that in some cases is somewhat dependent on our ability to hold these meetings in a manner that adheres to that executive order. And so, I honestly can't see right now, but if you are here without a mask, respectfully, we would request that you put one on. There are some available in the back. The first item then on the regular agenda is approval of minutes. These minutes are from a regular meeting held August 17th, 2021. When somebody's ready, we'll take that motion. Shall I move? The move by Dave.
I'll second.
Seconded by Amy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up then will be the Crystal Lake South High School presentation by Principal Nabilio.
A little easier to see now with the lights down.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I start with a congratulations to you, Adam, and a good luck to you, Jason. Thank you both for serving us and giving us an opportunity to lead in our buildings the way that we do. We feel like we have that support and the ability to lead the way we need to from a building level, and you guys are a basis of that. So from my end and from the principals, just a thank you to each one of you for that support. So just one more time of thank you.
Thanks, man.
All right, so tonight's presentation, before we jump in, I wanted to just say a couple of other thank yous. We have up here, from what I can see on my screen, two spaces in this building that have been redone in the course of the last year and a half. This space that we're standing in, the theater, is one of those two spaces. The other space is right down the hallway here as a gymnasium. And from the looks of those pictures there of the gymnasium, what we're looking at here in the theater, both of these spaces just came out incredibly well. They are, I think, a source of pride for us as a school building. They're a source of pride for our students when they're onstage or competing in the gymnasium. And so I know that that's a lot of work from the Board's end to make that possible. There's a lot of finances that need to be rearranged to make that possible. And so I guess I just want to start by saying thank you to you for that, and I thank you for those opportunities to keep this building looking as nice as it does year after year. So just a thank you for that as well. Tonight's presentation really is a conversation about what we started to call CLS Connect. And we have a couple of people here tonight who are going to step up and speak on behalf of what CLS Connect was. But if we rewind the clock back to February of 2021, we were sitting here in a school building, wondering, we have 40, 45% of our students in the building who are remote. We weren't sure what the '21-'22 school year was going to look like. We were questioning whether or not students were going to want to come back to the school building. We were wondering if students were going to be able to come back to the school building. And so we started having some conversations about what can we do to begin to connect with families in a new way and do some outreach to them within the communities and where they live, where they're spending their time. And so we call that CLS Connect. We spent the course of last spring developing what that plan was. We spent a lot of time last summer really implementing it. And we continue to implement what we're calling CLS Connect, which is an effort from our end to make sure that we are supporting students in every way possible and helping them reconnect to the school building. And so tonight, we're here to share a little bit about that. I wanted to mention that you, as a Board, gave us the opportunity to be able to use some of our ESER funds in a manner that we felt like would be best serving our students. And so some of what you're going to hear tonight is a discussion about how we use those ESER funds to make sure that we are supporting our students and getting them back on track, both academically and socio-emotionally. So what we did, simply put out some communication to our community, saying we really wanted to begin to reconnect with them in new ways. We took a look at our map of all the different students who come to Crystal Lake South, and we started drawing neighborhoods out around our community. And we said, you know, there's eight, nine different communities, and within each one of those neighborhoods and those communities that come to South, each one of them has a local park. And so we contacted each of the park districts. We partnered with them to be able to use their park spaces. We went to the different neighborhoods, and we began to do that outreach. You can see in the pictures, there were students who were coming and playing games of Can Jam with us. You can see the Giant Jenga. I think I got better at Giant Jenga this summer than I had ever been before. Spent some time doing some ring toss, giving out T-shirts to students, and really just beginning to have that conversation again about what it's like to interact with your peers, what it's like to interact with adults at school, and just begin to dream about what it is to come back to school. So this was a really neat way for us to be able to get out there. We did this every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the course of the summer, started in early June and ended in late July. So it gave us about eight trips, nine trips out to different parks. When we did that, we also partnered with food trucks. We asked a food truck to come out, be there with us. We had Churros and Chocolate. We have Vince and Vicky Ortiz here in the audience tonight. And we brought them in because Churros and Chocolate, when we talk about community partnerships, when we talk about the opportunity to be able to work with our businesses, to be able to provide a service back to our community, their company of Churros and Chocolate did exactly that. They met us out there every Tuesday and Thursday. They partnered with us in every way possible, and they really made it a great space for our students to really begin to reconnect with us, begin to connect with school buildings, and begin to connect with one another in the community. And so I just want to give a huge thank you to both Vince and Vicky and Churros and Chocolate for coming out here this evening and for what they did for us throughout the course of the summer. So round of applause to you guys. We have about 50 churros or so in the back, so if you haven't had dessert yet or you need some dessert, know before you walk out here this evening to grab some. But I want to, at this point, turn this over. Lori's going to talk a little bit about some of the other portions of this CLS Connect, and she's going to share a little bit about that, what we did service-wise throughout the summer.
So the first part of CLS Connect really was designed for all students, the entire CLS community, and that's why we went to those parks. But the second part of CLS Connect was really focused at what we called our two freshman classes. Those of you who know anything about the class of 2024, and I have some of them here with me, know that they didn't really get to have a normal freshman year. Many of them were remote. The typical freshman year experiences that they could have had, they just didn't get to have. And then we also had the class of 2025, who were transitioning in from eighth grade. They didn't get to have a traditional curriculum night or an eighth-grade night. And so we knew we really needed to work to make both of those classes feel comfortable here at South. So the second part of CLS Connect were events tailored to those two freshman classes. We started the summer with some service projects. We went to Feed My Starving Children. We brought about 50 students with us. Then we partnered with a community organization. Some of you know Second Bridge. There's a lot of South families very tied to that work. And our students came here to Crystal Lake South, and they helped us stuff duffels. And then when we got done stuffing duffels for kids in foster care, they helped us peel up all the blue tape that was in the hallways. So a huge thank you to them for that, because we also needed them to help us with that. And then after we did those two service projects, we started doing some high-interest events. One of my favorites was we brought a video game truck out onto campus to connect with a whole different group of students who love playing video games. You can see a picture of that on the screen. They had screens on the outside, they had screens on the inside, and it brought students to campus to connect with each other, who probably wouldn't have come to school for anything else. But when you bring a video game truck, they come, they connect, they got to know us, they got to know each other. And then one of the best parts of our CLS Connect campaign was what we called a week of connect sessions. There were eight in total. These were led by our staff. So throughout the week in July, our staff members came out and they led high-interest sessions based on their passions and what they taught. So we had everything from fishing to team building, leadership, studio art, theater, choreography. You see pictures up there of our fishing one, of our team-building one. And then the last picture you see there is of our digital production one, digital design and production. And so here tonight, to speak to you a little bit about that, is Mr. Zach Weiser. He gave up time this summer to lead that session. Not only did he do a phenomenal job leading that session, but the students got to design a little artifact. And after they left the session, he spent all of this time actually producing those artifacts. He put them all together in a package for the students. He made sure they all got them. And so that week of connect sessions led by our staff helped our students build excitement for electives. It helps them get them back in the building, and it helped them connect. And Zach was a huge part of that. So I'm going to turn this over to him.
Hello, Board. Thanks for having me. Thanks, Lori, and thanks, Josh. The timing of this was immaculate, and that's what I think of the most when I think of this whole experience, is the timing. Like, to parallel what Lori was saying, what a traumatic year the students had. And in thinking of time, it seems as though the older I get, the faster time goes. And so having a year or two years be somewhat strange, it seems like it went pretty fast all in all. But to imagine myself in the shoes of a student at that age, I remember summers feeling like two years long. So I think the trauma caused by going into the remote world and not seeing their friends at school on a daily basis had to be met with some sort of a focused energy. And I feel like we were able to do that on multiple, in multiple ways, in the community and in the classroom. In my classroom, I was able to meet with a good-sized group of students. We were able to be with each other, designing, thinking creatively, and producing small objects. I was, I loved having the opportunity to work with students for the first, you know, what seemed like forever. I was, I enjoyed doing that. I got to reach out to a lot of the families afterwards and say thank you very much for participating, and I felt like the kids had a great experience. I hope that they'll take home with them, and I know that they did, because I see them now in school. I hope that they took with them a sense that somebody at school cares about them and that they have somebody that's got their back, somebody that they can go to and talk to. And I think they've found that in the administration at Crystal Lake South, the teachers, and then meeting other students here at the school as well. Thank you.
So we have a message from the Yost family. This is a family who, I think, when we were imagining what this support would look like, this was a family that we were thinking of. We knew that they had been in a remote setting. They were looking to come back to the building, but they were needing some of those additional senses of feeling like they were going to be able to make this happen and in a safe setting. And so unfortunately, they were not able to be here tonight. They made a decision to stay home rather than be here. But they are a very involved family within our community. They were here. We did a gold-out last Friday evening through Cal's Angels. They were one of our ambassador families, and so they just decided it would be best for them to stay home tonight, but they wanted to send this video message to all of you.
Hi, my name is Shiler Yost, and I'm a sophomore at Crystal Lake South High School. Over the summer, I had the pleasure of being to go back to my high school for CLS Connect activities. These activities were designed to help students feel comfortable going back to school after a challenging year, and they also gave students a chance to meet others and interact with other students and the principals themselves. It felt very good to be going back to school, as I was remote for my entire freshman year. When I was remote, it was hard to watch kids have fun or have their own jokes in person through a screen. I was glad to have a remote option, but at the same time, it was easy for me to feel isolated. At each one of these events, I met a new person and started to feel even more connected to my school. Going to CLS Connect events made me feel excited for the start of the 2021 to 2022 school year, and each event was enjoyable for me to attend. I'm very grateful to my principals for organizing these events and for making me and other students feel like we truly belong at South.
I'm Beth, proud mom to Shiler. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to thank the CLS team for their efforts to help students adjust to in-person learning over the summer months. Shiler was a full remote student for the entire 2020-21 school year. And though she had supportive teachers and a successful academic year, as parents, we worried about how she would transition to the school setting after 15 months of virtual education and limited social interaction. Those worries were a wasted effort on our part. The same CLS team that visited each incoming freshman individually at home in the fall to welcome them and reassure them that they were part of the Gator community, no matter the learning model, had thought through those challenges as well and made a plan to support students with diverse needs and interests in meaningful ways. Mr. Nabilio and Ms. Ratliff focused on more than the obvious concerns, like how do I find my classroom or where do I eat lunch, and planned a full summer of activities to address the deeper anxieties about how to learn and socialize in a group of peers again and feel connected to the larger world. The CLS team also offered a week of connect sessions, which gave students the chance to be around others in the school setting while exploring a new or a long-held interest, such as art, theater, fishing, team-building, or design and production. After a year of Zoom square views of ceiling fans and eyebrows, these opportunities built Shiler's confidence and enthusiasm for returning to a more typical and interactive learning environment. Josh and Lori's commitment to caring for all students and for each student really made a difference to our family this summer. The time and effort they put into planning a summer full of opportunities for students new to the building demonstrated that those values are so much more than words on a wall.
So finally, to kind of wrap up, we wanted to share that we're back, and it has been awesome to have students back in the building, absolutely amazing. And we still have work to do, because we know that our students are still adjusting to being back in the building. We still feel that impact of having two freshman classes to some way. We feel the impact of having two junior classes in some ways. Missing that much of your high school experience is hard. So we continue to do things like create experiences for our students. We just had an awesome homecoming. We continue to recognize kids every week. We continue to do small things to fulfill our for-each-student philosophy, like singing birthday songs. I'm not so sure that that's much of a celebration, because neither of us can sing really well, but we try. We have a Gator Advisory, where we're trying to really connect our freshmen to the school. And so that's kind of what we laughingly call the CLS Connect Fall Edition, just with fewer churros and fewer games of Can Jam and Giant Jenga. But finally, though, the people that this is really about is not me, not Josh, but it's the students and the families that were involved. And so we have some here today. I wanted to thank them, and so I'm going to ask them to stand up in a moment. They came out. They came out to a ton of different park visits. Some of the families nearly came to every park visit. They came to Feed My Starving Children. They volunteered their time stuffing the duffel. They took our connect sessions. Some of them took nearly every connect session. It was just absolutely awesome having them here, and we are so proud of them and so proud that they are Gators. I promised them they didn't have to speak tonight, but I did tell them I was going to make them stand and wave. And so if you guys would not mind to stand and wave, we just want to say thank you so much, so. And that's just a few, but these folks here are awesome, and they make us really, really proud to do the job we do every day and really proud to be Gators.
That's really a wrap of what we have here for tonight. We're willing to entertain any questions if you have them. Otherwise, if not, just a thank you for the support. Thank you for the allowance of the creativity with the ESER funds. That really has gone a long way in helping us be able to provide these services to our students and be able to make sure that they are on their way to a successful future. So just a thank you to all of you for your support in that.
Thanks, guys.
Josh, I've enjoyed reading, seeing all your videos. I catch on Friday at about 3:00. You guys have those awesome videos, and I enjoy them. I listen to the students and what's going on in the school, and I appreciate that as a community member.
Any other questions?
How was homecoming?
It was a blast.
Yeah?
Yeah, it was really fun. We went, took the students outdoors for the pep rally. The game went really well. The homecoming dance on Saturday night was really well-attended. Did that outdoors in a courtyard and just had a ton of success with it.
I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up then will be the report of our Director of Communications.
Good evening, Board. In the last month, the district has received two FOIA requests. Those FOIA requests are both listed on tonight's Board agenda. All of the responsive documents are also posted as part of the Board's packet, which is also published on the district website under the Board of Education section. Are there any questions about those two FOIAs we received?
Any FOIA questions? I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, next up then will be public participation. Board Policy 2:230 allows for three minutes per person, 20 minutes per subject, and 30 minutes total public comment. I have one, two. I have seven requests to speak tonight. Did we miss any? Are there any more out there? Because we will stop once public comment starts. We got them all, so we should not have an issue bumping into the 30-minute limit. Do we have a timer that's going to be visible tonight or no? Yeah, all right, perfect. So we're going to throw the timer up there, so you guys can see it. We can see it from up here. We'd really rather not have to interrupt you. You can see your own time, and as long as everybody adheres to the three minutes, everybody will have more than enough time to speak. And then lastly, I see, I think, mostly familiar faces, but just so we are on the same page, this is your time to be heard, it is our time to listen. But the Board doesn't answer questions or get in a back-and-forth during this public comment, this is just for you. So we will go ahead and get moving. I am going to request one more time. I will say, please, again, put on a mask if you've chosen not to wear one to this point. We would really like to be able to continue this meeting and meetings going forward. With that, our first public speaker is Alex Davis.
Hello, my name is Alex Davis. Again, my kids go to Cary Grove, and I want to thank the Board for doing all their, for doing their jobs very well. And again, I want my kids to go to school, and I want them to stay there. For one, I don't care if you like to wear a mask or you don't want to wear a mask. It's up to you. But if not, the Board did not make that decision. The Governor did. So don't ask the Board to give up $17 million because you don't want to wear your masks. That's what you're asking them to do. So that means you would be paying roughly $4,800 to send your kids to go to Cary Grove or any other school. So thank you, Board, for doing your job very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next up is Kate Norton.
Good evening. My name is Kate Norton, and as a parent, I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge the good work being done at Crystal Lake South High School. I have one student who just graduated from Crystal Lake South and another student who is a junior. So I've had the privilege of watching Mr. Nabilio and Ms. Ratliff lead for the last five years. I cannot say enough about how competently Mr. Nabilio and Ms. Ratliff lead their students, their staff, and the Crystal Lake South community as a whole. In a timeframe in which it is challenging to do anything, let alone lead a building of teenagers and their parents, they have shown care, compassion, and leadership in a way that tops many organizations in our community. Trust me when I say I've been watching. Their leadership has enabled school to happen in person this year. Their leadership has enabled a peaceful, in-person, open house to happen this year. Their leadership has enabled new leaders to learn and grow from among their student population. Their leadership has provided care to families facing need throughout the pandemic. And their leadership has provided outlets for sharing mental health concerns as the community faces new challenges. They have made themselves available to help their community in whatever way is necessary, and all while smiling and showing respect for all who enter their school. These are no small feats when faced with challenges from all sides, including a pandemic and polarized political viewpoints. Conflicts and challenges are nothing new. Humanity as a whole wanting to do what they want to do when they want to do it is nothing new. Teaching and leading the next generation to look out for their fellow classmates, teachers, and community by making compassionate choices is unfortunately new. How we communicate with one another, how we listen to one another, how we make choices that do impact one another is critical to forming a community. I'm grateful that Mr. Nabilio and Ms. Ratliff are doing the hard work to meet the challenges and to teach our students a way forward that involves caring for one another with compassionate choices and respectful dialogue. It is my hope that through their leadership, our entire community may someday be able to move forward together more unified and more compassionate as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bruce Johnson.
Mr. President, I would ask that we take a recess to allow this individual, as well as anyone else that wishes to speak, to comply with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order Number 85 and don a mask.
If I may respond, I'd like to give you the act on discrimination.
Not yet, Mr. Johnson, no. So Tom, I think that, we'll take that as a motion on the floor.
Yes, please.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Jason. Is there any discussion on this before we put it to a vote? Andy, could we get a roll call on the motion to take a recess to allow our public participants to put masks on, please?
Yes. Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
All right, we'll take 15. Come back, and we'll give this another shot. All right, thank you, guys. The board is back. It does appear that you guys were willing to cooperate with us. We do appreciate that. So we will resume public comment with Bruce Johnson.
Good evening. I chose not to wear a mask here, not out of disrespect for the board, but for respect for the fallen heroes of our country that stand for our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and for each and every one of us here as American citizens. My name is Bruce Johnson. I'm a District 155 taxpayer and currently have one granddaughter as a freshman at Crystal Lake South High School. As our elected school board members, you have solemnly sworn to faithfully discharge your duties of the office of the Board of Education of Community High School, District 155. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of your ability, you may or may not be aware of the Illinois law, 745 ILCS 70, which I did give a copy or put cards up there. In fact, for the other folks that I gave it to, there's a QR code. You can click on that, go right to the state law. This is a law. This is not a mandate. This is not a government order. It has to do with discrimination. It shall be unlawful for any person, public or private institution, or public official to discriminate against any person in any manner, including but not limited to licensing, hiring, promotion, transfer, staff appointment, hospital managed care entity, or any other privileges because of a person's conscientious refusal to receive, obtain, accept, perform, assist, counsel, suggest, recommend, refer, or participate in any way particular, in any particular form of healthcare services contrary to his or her conscience. Now, this law was passed in 1998. Additionally, FEMA Civil Rights Bulletin further describes that rights, laws, and legal authorities remain in full effect authorities remain in full effect and cannot be waived during COVID-19. It cannot be waived by executive orders, by this or any other disaster. The mask mandate handed out by Governor Pritzker is not a law due to the fact that no such statute has been created or ratified by our state's legislature. This mandate is unlawful and is discrimination. School District 155 is complying with this unlawful mandate and is furthermore exposed to potential legal actions and remedies as described hereby in that same law. 745 ILCS 7-0. Section 12, actions damages any person, association, corporation, entity, or healthcare facility injured by any public or private person, association, agency, entity, or corporation by reason of any action prohibited by this act, may commence a suit therefore and shall recover threefold the actual damages, including pain and suffering sustained by such person, association, corporation, entity, or healthcare facility. The costs of the suit and the reasonable attorney's fees, but in no case shall recovery be less than $2,500 for each violation, in addition to costs of the suit and reasonable attorney's fees. These damage remedies shall be cumulative and not exclusive of other remedies afforded under any other law or state or federal law.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next up, sorry, next up will be Terry Orton.
Good evening, board and parents and everyone present here. I'm throwing a little off guard. I was hoping about 20 people would have gone before me. I know the clock's going. I just have a couple things. It seems like there's a division in the room. We know that. And I'm just, I would hope there would be a way for everybody to come together. I feel like, you know, there's friends and enemies here. And I'm uncomfortable with, you know, the tension in the room, the tension that I feel and what's happening. And I don't even know who to address on this, but I just really wish that we could, we could all kind of see eye to eye on some of these matters. You know, there's so much happening right now in the world. We're all full of stress just by turning on the news or opening up a paper. And, you know, I understand, you know, the concern on the mask. I'm there also with my wife. I also got to say, I understand if we're going to attend a place that they're going to require, we got to abide by it. Or there's just going to be, you know, we're going to get nowhere on this stuff. So I've only got a little over a minute left. And what I really came is I wanted to come up after my wife. And this topic of vaccination for the children is being discussed in Springfield right now. And we might be doing the same thing over the vaccination, you know. If you're not vaccinated, you might not be able to attend these things. So I just had something I wanted to bring up, and that was a list of the people who are exempt from this vaccination. This is exempt from Biden's vaccination. And I just wanted to read it. It's Congress and the legislation branch, congressional staff, judicial branch, the White House staff, CDC employees, the FDA employees, USBS employees, Pfizer employees, the Moderna employees, and illegal aliens. They're all exempt from the vaccination. So I'd just like to say, as this moves forward, and they're going to, they're pushing to have our kids vaccinated and have everyone, that we can remember that there's got to be a reason that these people, even the people who are making the vaccination are exempt from taking it. And we all keep that in mind, you know, the board and everyone. So hopefully, we won't always have to go along with what, you know, our governor mandates or whatever. And we could, you know, stand up as a community all together as one instead of this side and that side. We could just come together and maybe agree on something, on a bigger issue. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. Sorry if I wound up getting the order wrong, but next up is Maggie Orton.
I really wish I could see everybody's faces. It's really hard to see if you guys are smiling underneath there or what. It's so hard with these masks. But anyway, good evening, members of the school board, parents, and all who are present. I'd like to start off with God's Word found in Proverbs 29:2, "When the godly are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked are in power, they groan." It seems like there is much groaning going on these days, and for good reason. My concern is the COVID vaccinations for our children that are seeming to be being pushed now. So I did some research. Over 700,000 adverse events are happening after the vaccines, 60,741 hospitalizations, 80,393 urgent care, over 6,000 heart attacks, over 5,000 myocarditis, over 1,800 miscarriages, 19,210 disabled, and 14,925 deaths. That's just the recent from the CDC and VAERS. Keep in mind, only about 10% of vaccine adverse reactions/deaths are actually reported. VAERS says we've averaged 2,598 COVID vaccine-related adverse reactions per day since December 14, 2020. Again, that's almost 2,600 jab-related adverse reactions per day, also 225 COVID vaccine-related hospitalizations per day, 297 COVID vaccine-related urgent care visits per day, 55 COVID vaccine-related deaths per day. So as parents, we ask you, will you listen to the concerns of the parents when it comes to this issue? Or will you just bow down to the governor again because he mandates it? And by the way, the mandate is not a law. Mandates are about forcing individuals to lose their freedom, choice, individuality, and human rights. We are the people. We are parents, and we get to make the choice for our families, not a governor, and even the school board, if you guys don't, you know, agree. This is something to be discussed between a doctor and a patient. Since when did we have to submit to injecting an untested rush-to-production experimental-for-emergency-use-only shot in our bodies? When did we decide the government could inject experimental shots into the bodies of unwilling citizens? Isn't that a basic human right to decide for ourselves? Please educate yourselves on the Nuremberg Trials. Pay attention to the adverse effects these shots are causing on our children and even causing death to our children. Every body has a different reaction. I will not take a chance on my child to see if he does or does not have an adverse reaction. This is not a one-size-fits-all shot. There are other alternatives to this vaccine, and I will email you some things as well, if you'd like. We have far greater problems than COVID and masks and shots that we are facing today. We have a government and leaders and even school boards who want to tell us how we are to live, what we are allowed to do, or where we are allowed to go, and whether our kids will be wearing masks and getting the shot. Government can force us to close our businesses, to kill our jobs, to decide who is nonessential. Leaders and school boards can tell us what our children will be learning in schools, such as critical race theory and this new sex education curriculum that's coming, and even pushing transgenderism. And we, as parents, seem to have no say in this, and no support from our school board, and that is wrong. Doesn't make any sense. I just have one little last one. So we, the parents, we, the people, don't comply to these things. We stand against them, and we ask you to stand against this too, and stand for our children, and stand for freedom, for not only our children, but for yours too, and your grandchildren and the next generation. Please draw a line in the sand now. Let us seek God's wisdom and authority so we can rejoice again in what is right and good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Orton. Next up, Ryan. I apologize. I'm going to screw up your last name. Can I just go with Ryan?
That's all right. Everybody does. Good evening, board. My name is Ryan Spinolis. I am a class of 2015 graduate of Crystal Lake South. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Nobilio. Whether he remembers or not, he was able to resolve a scheduling conflict with the college board, so then I could take my AP test without missing my junior year trip to Six Flags. So thank you. During my time at South, I had an incredible experience with teachers who were able to teach me the value in being able to come to your own conclusions. When I asked a question, I was never given the answers. Instead, I had to think critically as they would guide me to find the answers myself. I have since realized that this is a clever tactic to offload the work of teaching onto the students. That's a joke. But these lessons had incredible impact on me, and it's in part the reason why I chose a career in science and, excuse me, engineering. However, comments over this and previous board meetings have me uneasy. I don't envy the position the board has placed in, caught between the safety of students and staff and the concern of worried parents. Regardless, I urge the board to continue to enforce policy that is rational, well-founded, and backed by science. If masks didn't work, why would we be taught as kids to cover our mouths when we coughed? If vaccines are so dangerous, then have a conversation with your doctor, although I can imagine what they would say considering 96% of doctors are vaccinated. These are the tools that we can use to fight the pandemic. This is not an issue about power. We all just want the pandemic to end. Excuse me. Your disbelief in science will not change the opinion of an unthinking disease that was the third leading cause of death in 2020. Now, some may say I'm living in fear, and they might be right to an extent. I'm afraid that lives are being lost due to misinformation. I'm afraid of the blatant politicization that means that choosing evidence is also choosing a side. I'm afraid of the alarming level of distrust shown in the scientific method. Now, don't be mistaken. I'm not putting blind faith in science. I'm putting my faith in the overwhelming amount of research conducted by experts all over the world with more education, experience, and resources than any of us could ever imagine. Now, it's my understanding that the district will keep its policies in line with Governor Pritzker's mandates for Illinois schools, and I urge the board to continue to do so. Now, it's not the time for divisive rhetoric. It's about doing what we can to keep each other safe. I mean, just imagine, your freedoms, my freedoms, to not wear a mask or get vaccinated, could land somebody in the hospital. What if you was your child, or you, or their teacher? I mean, that last one isn't even a hypothetical. In the state of Florida alone, our mask and vaccine requirements were some of the lowest in the country. Over 50 educators and school employees have died in the past two months. I'm sorry, but I can't just sit and do nothing. We've been given the tools. I just hope that we can use them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next up is Jonathan Byam. Sorry if I screwed that one up. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. I'd first like to go ahead and express my thanks. I don't think there are many in the room here tonight who respect your service and sacrifice more than I do. As a teacher at Crystal Lake Central High School, I have taught many of your family members, many of your children. I've worked with some of your family members. I've been to school with some of your family members because I'm also a graduate of Crystal Lake Central High School. So tonight, as I begin my remarks, I'd like to beg your pardon. If my remarks are sharp, it is only in accordance with the strength of my belief. I'm here tonight to object to the vaccine and testing mandates of our governor. I was hired as a history teacher to train students to be free and to live in a free society. Unfortunately, it is a growing fear that I have that we no longer live in such a society. The governor issues a mandate, and you yourselves become the enforcers of that mandate. This is tyranny. I do not believe it is appropriate to submit to the rule of man. I am familiar with the Illinois Emergency Act. As somebody who has been hired to teach the Illinois and U.S. Constitution to our students, I am also familiar with the Illinois Constitution. Under Article 2, where it says that no branch shall exercise the powers justly given to another branch, I believe that that is what is happening here today. Why does this mean so much to me? My father is Annapolis, class of '72. My grandfathers fought in World War II. And why did they die? And why did they serve? I got my answer when I visited the beaches of Normandy. And there, there is a sign, and it's addressed to the French people. And it says, remember that those who died here died so that you might be free. The gentleman in the back talked about $17 million. What is freedom worth? Walk through Arlington. My grandfather is buried in Bushnell. There are graves, millions of them, across this country. And I ask you to set an example. Set an example for our students. I am to train them to be free? I ask you to go ahead and set the example and show them how to be free. Stand with me. Stand with those who stand with freedom. That is what I ask of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If the board doesn't object, we did get two late requests. Everybody's done a pretty good job of sticking to the three minutes, so we can still do these in under 30, if you guys are okay. We'll add these late too. First will be Michelle Gast.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Gast. I have a freshman and a senior at Cary Grove. First, I thank you all for your time and your service on the board. I do believe that regardless of our similar or differing views, we all want what's best for our children, our students. There are three primary topics of concern for me currently. The first is the potential mandated vaccinations for students, the mask mandates, and lastly, the critical race theory. But given the time limit, I'll speak tonight about the most pressing potential threat our students are facing, which is the potential for mandated vaccinations. Let me say from the outset, I'm not an anti-vaxxer. My family all receives the flu vaccines every year, along with other vaccinations recommended by the American Academy of Pediatricians. Those that have been tested long-term for their efficacy and any adverse side effects, the safety that can only be assessed with the passage of time. However, this COVID-19 shot treatment is not a typical vaccine in the sense that we're used to. It is a gene therapy using mRNA technology, which I'm sure you've all read about, and if not, I would be so happy to provide resources for that. But rather, with my time, I'd like to prefer to focus on the fact that we simply do not know the long-term outcomes or the risks. Regardless of whether they label the so-called vaccine approved for use or emergency use, it is still considered experimental and untested long-term for efficacy and side effects, which the normal protocol for assessing is 15 years. This was rushed with good reason, but you cannot condense 15 years into one. I'm very concerned that the risks of any receiving the shot, but especially in the healthy young, outweigh the benefit. Our children are young and healthy with robust immune systems. They're more at risk of dying of the flu, getting struck by lightning, dying in a car accident. The great majority of healthy teens who do not have underlying conditions will normally experience mild symptoms, and their rigorous immune systems does well against the virus. 99.999% of those 0-14 will survive. 99.98% of all those ages 15-18 will survive. 99.97% of ages 20-49. 99.5% of those 50-70 years old even. Furthermore, the asymptomatic young are not effective transmitters of the virus. So please stay home if you're sick. Studies show that most of the transmission moves from adult to adult or adult to child, not from child to adult. 85% of the spread happens within households from an adult, not at school. Conversely, the risks of potential side effects of this experimental vaccine in the young are just, just to name a few. Myocarditis, and this is not rare, it is serious, happening to thousands of kids. Blood clots, fertility issues, paralysis. Again, those are only a few I can provide in this time limit. None of these are mild risks. With these statistics, the shot is a contraindication for kids. Moreover, if the child has already contracted COVID and has natural immunity, which is the best situation, why subject them to the risks of the shot? If you're concerned about them spreading to others, isn't it the responsibility to get vaccinated? Not when you have current studies and reports that find that kids are not good transmitters of the virus, especially the asymptomatic. It's not favorable to those who have already have gotten COVID to get vaccinated, and the continued variants we see may be developing as the virus resists the vaccine.
Thank you.
I look forward to speaking to you more next month. Thank you for your time.
And then, last thing, we have, I'm going to strike out with all the names. Kathy? Hope that's okay? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
First, I just want to start off that down in southern Illinois, it was Unit 50 School District and then Carlisle Community College School District. They just lost the case. Tom DeVore challenged it. And those school districts can no longer mandate masks or mandate quarantine because they found that ISB does not have the power to do so. So that is validated as of today. Please look it up because it matters. Even though you guys have been, you guys have been voted in, vast majority of you guys are teachers. We pay those salaries. You guys do not. So it'll be nice, yes, there are teachers on the board.
No.
Oh, there's no longer teachers? Then take that back. But with that, being elected, that means you're supposed to do what the community is asking of you, and basically, we're pleading with you. In regards to the vaccine, I need to ask you to please look up the FDA Comrenati, that's the FDA-approved Pfizer vaccine, package label. You will notice You will notice in there that the clinical studies actually say ongoing. They are not finished. Comoranti is not on the marketplace. The Pfizer vaccine that's going into each and every one of you and has is emergency use only. It is not the brand product. The brand product will not come out for another five to seven years. I am a pharmacist. I am very familiar with these things. Within the cardiomyopathy, within those young adults, it actually says in the Comoranti BLA, which is a biological licensing agreement that the FDA submitted to BioNTech, they have to complete those studies in 2023 to see the true impact that cardiomyopathy has had on the children. In regards to pregnancy, the New England Journal of Medicine, they once said, hey, you can get the vaccine if you're pregnant. Go get it. It's good. New England Journal of Medicine, they just retracted that. So how often has our scientists that are at the head of this telling us what we need to put in our children, what we need to put in ourselves? How often have they had to have been retracted? We got Lancet from the hydroxychloroquine. We got New England Journal Medicine. We got mask, no mask, mask, no mask, three masks, five masks, and ninety-five masks. If masks were so successful, we would have been using them for the last fifty years for how long we've been testing them. We wouldn't have had all these influenza breakouts, right? We didn't care how many people were dying at the time. I don't mean that malice. I'm just saying, no one was paying attention. But all of a sudden, now we are. Notice with the PCR tests, those PCR tests were retracted from the FDA in July. They're all under emergency use approval. Not a single one is FDA-approved that's on the market. Come December, you're gonna get a new one. It's gonna be a COVID and a flu one. They're able to differentiate. How can they differentiate COVID if they couldn't differentiate COVID already? So these are all factors that no one is paying attention to and is driving me nuts as a medical professional. I'm ashamed of my own profession for not questioning. Okay? So again, look up the Comoranti package label yourself. FDA package label. Clinical studies, ongoing. Use in pregnancy, no data sufficient. Use in lactation, no data sufficient. Okay?
Thank you very much.
It's not on the marketplace, and that's just what I wanna wrest with. Everything is emergency use only, and you guys should never mandate it into the children, into our schools, or in this community. That'll be shame on you.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment is over. All right. Next up then will be the report of the Chief Officer of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, Board and community members. First, the Treasury's report, which can be found on page eighty-eight of your posted board packet. At August thirty-first, the district's preliminary ending fund balances were fifty-three-point-two million, an increase of three-point-nine million or seven-point-nine percent. The position was favorably impacted by spring tax receipts associated with the 2020 tax levy. The overall revenue coverage ratio of forty-five-point-nine percent remains compliant with fund balance policy four-twenty. Moving on to board bills, found on page one oh-four of your packets. Administration recommends that the Board of Education approves bills payable in the amount of nine million dollars, covering the period of August eleventh through September fourteenth. The balance is further broken down between payroll-related items at six-point-four million or seventy-one percent of the total, and vendor payments, the remaining two-point-six million or twenty-nine percent. Are there any questions with regard to this month's Treasury report or bills payable?
There any questions before we ask for a motion to approve those bills? If not, could I get a motion to approve those bills as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Amy.
Second.
Second by, excuse me, seconded by Dave. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Moving on.
Next, the approval of the activity bus lease. I am seeking a motion to approve this lease. The approval of the lease and the associated savings of over fifty thousand dollars over the next two years compared with our existing lease were discussed in detail with the Finance Committee last month. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions on that, could we get a motion to approve the school activity bus leases, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dave.
Second.
Seconded by Jason. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
And Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Great. Finally, the approval of the change of insurance carriers and new rates. I am seeking a motion to approve the change in insurance carriers, namely Aetna for health insurance, Aetna for stop-loss insurance, and Alliant Core Trust for pharmacy benefits. We will remain with VSP for vision insurance and Delta Dental for dental insurance. The approval of these rates were discussed in detail with the Finance Committee earlier this evening. Are there any questions?
We did just talk about this one, but if there aren't any questions, then if we could get a motion for the approval of the change of health insurance carriers and the new rates, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Nicole.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up then is the report of our Director of Operations, Mr. Troy Stinger.
Good evening, Board. Last week, at the Operations Committee meeting, we discussed three items that require board approval. The first item is the renewal of the snow removal and salting services contract with our existing vendors, Greve Construction and Langton Group, for the upcoming winter season. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval to renew those contracts, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing no questions, could we get a motion for the approval of the snow removal and salting services contracts as presented, please?
So moved.
Moved by Amy?
Second.
Seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yep.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Okay, the second item is the re-execution of the district's parking lot license agreement with Saint Elizabeth and Seton Catholic Church for overflow parking during Crystal Lake South home football games. Again, I'm asking for your approval to re-execute this agreement.
All right. Any questions there? If not, if we could get a motion for the approval of the parking lot license agreement as presented, please?
So moved.
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Amy. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes. The final item is the Illinois State Board of Education School Maintenance Project Grant for fiscal year 2022. Again, tonight, I'm asking for your approval to move forward with submitting the application for that grant.
Any questions there? If not, then if we could get the motion for the approval of the Illinois State Board of Education School Maintenance Project Grant, fiscal year twenty-two, round one, application.
So moved.
Moved by Nicole.
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Thank you, Troy. Next up then is the report of the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, Jay Sargent.
Good evening, Board. Item A is really just an informational item for you. Each year, we are required to submit on our website notification of certified salary report. We have completed that process, and that will be up on Wednesday of this week. It is under the Finance page and under the Compensation Report. So it's very transparent where that's at, and I just wanted to notify you that that would be in compliance with what we are required to do. Any questions regarding that?
Good.
Items B, C, and D constitute the Consent Agenda items, so I'm hoping if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those, but if you do not, if I could get a motion to approve those three items, that would be great.
If there aren't any questions for Jay on those, if we could get a motion to approve Consent Agenda items B, C, and D, please?
So moved.
Moved by Dave. Seconded by Tom. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yep.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Board.
Next up then will be the report of the Superintendent, Steve Olson.
Good evening, Board. Just a couple of quick items here. First off, six-day enrollment. I'm pleased to report that currently, we are looking at fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight students at Crystal Lake Central, fifteen-hundred-and-sixteen at Cary Grove High School, thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-two at South, and eleven-seventy-eight at Prairie Ridge, for a total of five-thousand-six-hundred-and-four students in the district at this time. It is a reduction of sixty-nine students over last year's six-day enrollment number, which does trend, as I think presented here a couple of months ago, as far as the Caserta study. We're in alignment with Caserta B, which had us at five-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighteen. So we're kind of falling right in line with what was projected by him, taking into account each of the schools and their enrollment at this point in time. So that was more informational. My second item here is just to seek a motion to approve the District One-Fifty-Five Summer Graduates. We had ten students from Cary Grove, two from Crystal Lake Central, five from Crystal Lake South, and nine from Prairie Ridge High School, for a total of twenty-five. Give me a quick math.
Something like that.
Twenty-six.
It's late.
Twenty-six.
All right. If there aren't any questions on that, could we get a motion to approve the District One-Fifty-Five Summer Graduates, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
So moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Amy. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
He stepped out.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
And Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
And I guess just as a side note, we are continuing to track and trend where our students and staff are at when it comes to positive cases in quarantine that is posted on our website on a weekly basis. It's posted every Wednesday. At this point in time, we have had sixty-one positive cases in our student population of five-thousand-six-hundred-and-four, and we've had a hundred-and-sixteen total that have been excluded either due to quarantine or isolation, which would configure to be about fifty-five students that have been quarantined based upon close contact at this point in time. So that's just more for your information, but it is available to the public as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any old business or committee reports tonight? Seeing none, is there any new business or matters to be brought up by the board? Seeing none, then, we will need a motion to adjourn for executive session. This executive session is for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, Section C two. Can I get that motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Nicole. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevic?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazer?
Yes.
And Mr. Gus?
Yep. All right, then we are adjourned for executive session. We do expect action when we return. when we return.
You guys good? Oh geez, sorry. All right. Can we have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
I got Tom and Amy. Yeah?
Yep.
All right. Can I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
All right. Then can I please have a motion to approve the memorand- excuse me, memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Dave.
Second.
Second by Jason. Roll call, please.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
All right. Then can I please have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Dave.
Second.
Second by Jason. Roll call, please.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
All right. Then can I please have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Dave.
Second.
Second by Jason. Roll call, please.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?
Yes.
And Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pavoris?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And then can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with District 155 Education Association regarding 2021-2022 COVID administrative leave bank and related COVID issues?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Amy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaklevak?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Blasier?
Yes.
Mr. Gus?